Good afternoon, Vice Chairman.
Good afternoon. Welcome everyone to today's virtual meeting of the Lincolnshire Schools Forum. It's fourteenth of November twenty twenty four and my name's Josh Greaves. I'm Vice Chair and I'll be chairing the forum in the Chair's absence today. Before we begin, we have a few matters of procedure to mention. So today's briefing proceeding, so will be audio broadcast and recorded. When invited to speak by the Vice Chair, members and officers should unmute their microphones and please switch on their video. Then, when the member or officer has finished, please mute and switch off microphone and video again. If at any point during the debate, a member or officer would like to ask a further question or raise a point, please use the chat function and just write 'speak' as a comment. Members are requested to indicate using the chat function if they're leaving the meeting. And if members lose connection during the meeting, it's recommended they end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin via the meeting link provided. And if I made aware that the meeting at any point becomes inaccessible to the public through remote means or that any members of the forum have lost their connection due to tech or other failures of provision, we'll adjourn briefly for five minutes to our members' time to log in once again. So hopefully, having covered all of that accurately, Jess, I'm going to hand over to you, Democratic Services Officer, to confirm the presence of all members and officers in attendance today.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. So I'm going to read out the roll call and if you can just please say yes as I read out your name to indicate your attendance, if that's okay. So first of all, we've got Amy Stanser.
Yes.
Thank you, Amy. We have Janet Kennedy. Alan Ho.
Whoops. Yes, good afternoon people from a chilly sitting on tea.
We have Colin Clay.
Yes.
Thank you, Colin. We have Michelle Anderson.
Yes, afternoon, everyone.
Thank you, Michelle. Andrew Everard.
Yes.
Andrew, Steve Baragwanna. Simon Pickett.
Yes.
Thank you, Simon. Tristan Revel.
Yes.
Thank you, Tristan. Even Hopkins. Josh Greaves.
Yes.
Thank you, Josh. Andrew Watts.
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew. And finally, Peter Tomlinson. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the roll call. Would you like me to confirm the officers as well in attendance?
Yes, please, Jess.
No problem. With three, we have Mark Popperwell, Strategic Finance Lead for Children's Services, Lizbeth Bowes, Strategic Finance Manager, Schools Finance Team, Martin Smith, Assistant Director for Children's Education, Geraldine O'Neill, Sustainability and Development Manager for Children's, Kate Capell, Head of Service for Inclusion and Head of Sandy, Executive Director of Children's Services. Is there anyone that I've not read out who's in the meeting?
Geraldine Wilders, Head of Service for School Strategy.
Thank you, Geraldine. Lovely. That concludes the roll call. Thank you, Vice Chairman.
That's great. Thank you and welcome all members and officers. Item one business, have we received any apologies, Jess?
Yes, thank you. We've received apologies from Gavin Booth, Chris Fitzpatrick, Laura Martin, Liam Mason, Tony Stephens and Philip Dickinson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And item number two, which is declaration of members' interests. Does anyone present have any interest they wish to declare? And if so, can you please type 'speak' in the chat function? We'll just give this a moment. Okay, and it remains at everyone's discretion to declare an interest on any matter as they arise. So please do feel free to do so. So moving into the substantive agenda items then, colleagues. Item number three, minutes of the Lincolnshire Schools Forum meeting held on the thirteenth of June twenty twenty four, if you can remember that far back. I'd like to propose the minutes as a correct record. Do we have a second, please?
Josh, I'm Alan. I'm happy to second them.
Thank you, Alan. It's therefore proposed in second of the minutes have been approved. Do we have anyone wishing to abstain? Thank you. Or any colleagues against? No. Okay, thank you, everyone then. Before we proceed on to the detailed papers, there's just one chairman's announcement that I wish to make. We celebrated Professor Durant's significant contribution to the school forum and when he stepped down at a previous meeting. In the intervening period, we received the very sad news that Professor Durant had sadly passed. Condolences and wishes were expressed by colleagues at the authority to school and community, but it felt incredibly important to recognise as a forum, not least Professor Durant's very significant contribution to this group over many years, but also to all children, young people and colleagues in support of education across county. So just wanted to make that point formally and bring that to everyone's attention if you weren't aware.
Can I say on behalf of Kings, thank you very much for that, Josh. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that then, I'm going to move us on to agenda item number five, which is the National Funding Formula for Schools, update twenty five, twenty six. And I'd be delighted to invite Lizzie Bowes, Strategic Finance Manager, Schools Finance Team, inclusion to present the report.
Thank you very much, Josh. Good afternoon, everybody. So I'll first go through the report and then we can discuss the recommendations. So due to the timing of the election, the publication of the school's revenue funding operational guide and notional funding allocations for two thousand and twenty five, twenty six have been delayed. The autumn budget detailed an increase in core schools' budget funding of one point three billion. A policy summary note was issued in early October detailing the structure of the National Funding Formula for twenty five, twenty six, which is detailed on pages twelve and thirteen of the report, which confirmed there would be no substantial changes to the formula. Further information was shared by the Education Skills and Funding Agency last week, detailing the notional formula factor values for twenty five, twenty six, which was shared with the forum yesterday afternoon. As we had been previously advised, a number of grants have now been incorporated into the formula. The table shared yesterday shows the national funding formula rates for twenty four, twenty five, the amount of grant funding that has been incorporated into the formula, including an uplift to the core school budget grant and provisional rates for twenty five, twenty six. These grants cover the current year's pay awards for teachers and support staff. At this stage, it is unclear whether the twenty five, twenty six schools' funding settlement includes allowances for future potential pay awards. Local authorities will continue to have responsibility for setting local formula for mainstream schools. A local authority has recently undertaken a schools' funding consultation with all schools and academies. The consultation closed on Tuesday and an updated consultation document, including response rates, was shared with four members yesterday, which I'll now go through. The response rate was below ten percent across maintained schools, which was disappointing, however, it does provide a direction to travel. The consultation covered four key areas. Firstly, affordability. As we have seen in the last few years, the local authority has had to undertake steps in order to address an affordability gap when replicating the national funding formula due to lags funding for pupil-led factors. The local authority has addressed this by reducing the ORPU values across the sector. Seventy six percent of respondents were in support of the local authority's proposal to make a downward adjustment to ORPU values across the sector should affordability issues arise. For those not in favour, there is a mix of views as to how affordability should be addressed as detailed in the response table for question one. The local authority consider a downward adjustment to ORPU values provides a sector-wide solution and has the least impact on each school's budget. The local authority therefore proposes to continue to make a downward adjustment to ORPU values across the sector if affordability becomes an issue. The second question focuses on the minimum funding guarantee. The MFG is a funding mechanism that determines the change in pupil funding levels that a school can experience from year to year. The local authorities are required to set the MFG within a set range. The values for twenty five, twenty six were published by the ESFA after the consultation had launched and advised the range would be set at a lower range of minus half a percent to zero percent. Eighty six percent of respondents were in favour of the local authority setting the MFG at the highest rate possible. The local authority therefore proposes to set the MFG at naught percent in twenty five, twenty six so that no schools will see a reduction in per pupil funding, which will provide short-term stability in funding the schools that are funded above the government's national funding formula for historic reasons or pupil characteristic changes. The third question in the consultation concentrated on the primary rent factor. Local authorities can request the inclusion of additional factors in their formula for exceptional circumstances. A number of Lincolnshire primary schools are financially disadvantaged compared to other similar schools due to paying for rents for ground and schools' buildings on the school site and playing fields. The local authority considered the primary rents factor to be fundamental to ensure equity and fairness in funding across its schools. Six schools meet the criteria with ten lease agreements totaling fifty nine thousand pounds. The local authority are now required to apply to the DFE on an annual basis to the disapplication process for the inclusion of the primary school's rents factor within the national funding formula. Seventy one percent of respondents were in favour of continuing to apply this factor. The local authority therefore recommends schools' forms approval to continue adopting the primary rent factor in twenty five, twenty six to ensure equity and fairness in funding. The final question of the consultation regarding the block transfer will be covered in the revised budget paper, school's budget paper. In terms of conclusions, although the local authority has had provisional information, we are waiting for confirmation of funding announcements later in the month to determine the impact on Lincolnshire schools. In previous years, as I've already said, the ESFA has provided additional grants for financial support for the pay awards, but we have no indication as to what that will be for twenty five, twenty six yet. The next steps are detailed on page sixteen, which includes submitting a disapplication request for the primary rent factor should the form approve its continuation and the statute dates that information must be submitted and shared in relation to the publication of school budgets. So the forum are asked to consider the recommendations on page eleven.
Thank you, Lizzie. That's great. Colleagues, does anyone have any questions then? And if so, if they could indicate in the chat bar. No? Okay, thank you. So this is a little bit of a mouthful for me, which Liz is really succinctly... Oh, Simon, please, go ahead.
Very sorry, Josh, took me a little bit of time to type there. Sorry, I did just have one question, which was on page thirteen of the report about about the officers' dialogue with billing authorities in Lincolnshire and hope that transferring to the new payment method twenty five, twenty six, further details to follow. What the issue was currently with not being able to move over to that factor?
Thank you, Simon. So at the moment, we have a process where the billing authorities issue their rates bills to all the schools and academies, who then pay those bills. The new process effectively kind of cuts that middleman out. So what would happen is the billing authorities would upload the bills onto a portal and the ESFA would then pay that. So rather than having that funding into your individual school's budgets, it kind of just goes directly. The issue is, in order to move over to that new process, all the billing authorities in Lincolnshire have to agree to that because we're a two-tier system. And at the moment, not all of the billing authorities are in agreement because they feel it may create additional work for them in terms of the template that they have to complete to get that information up there. We are working with them regarding that. They have been on the ESFA webinar and we continue to have dialogue with them in terms of trying to move them across to the new process.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Lizzie, Mark, did you have anything to come in further on there? Or is that okay?
Yeah, just to add, Simon, obviously, we're really keen to move on to this because we see the administration efficiencies from that, both from a local authority perspective but also from the school's perspective as well. Essentially, it's all going back to central government, isn't it? So the ESFA are very prominent on this. They really want all local authorities to move on that, although they've not actually put that in the regulations to enforce that, unfortunately. But they have, say, we've had a bit of a split across the seven districts and the ESFA have actually contacted me to see if they can facilitate this. So we'll see where that goes. But one hopes if it's not twenty five, twenty six, we'll hopefully get there in twenty six, twenty seven. So if you look at the number of local authorities that have moved over, there is very few remaining. So I think my last count, it was about twenty four, and we was one of those. And what you saw, it was the two-tier local authorities like Lincolnshire, unfortunately. So where decisions could be made internally in an organisation, they've obviously gone with that. But we do consider there to be operational efficiency savings within the district councils, particularly on debt recovery and also the processing element of that. So yeah, watch this space, but we are trying to move in that direction, which I'm sure schools will be supportive of.
Thank you very much. I think you said the same thing last year, but thank you.
We try and...
Yeah, absolute agreement. I think completing that is a waste of time to give us money that we then claim back that we give back again. So it just seems ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you all. Andrew, if I can invite you in?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the consultation. Is the less than ten percent response typical annually? And do you have any indication of what proportion of funding these respondents you have got actually cover? Are they small amounts or are they larger schools?
I mean, typically, thank you, Andrew, typically the response rate is low. I would say it's lower than it has been in the past, but normally we kind of get between about ten to fifteen percent. So it isn't something we get a massive high amount on normally anyway. We haven't yet looked. So the tables would detail the split between the different sectors in terms of those respondents. We haven't done any analysis in terms of their size of their budgets, but that's something we can look into.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew and Lizzie. Are there any further questions or comments on this paper before I move to the recommendations?
Thank you, Josh. I just put 'speak' in the chat just to follow up on that. I just wanted to apologise. Kings, I didn't respond to that. Just the wording at the top. I think to some extent I got confused as to whether it was maintained schools only that could respond or both. It does say academies. I appreciate that. But I read it several times trying to decide whether we could respond or not. So just apologies there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Simon, and apologies I missed you in the chat there. Anything further from anyone else? Okay, so I propose then that we have received the summary of the update, the DFE relating to the National Funding Formula twenty five, twenty six, that Schools Forum agrees to the disapplication request for the continuation of the primary school's rents factor relating to school premises within Lincolnshire's current local formula under the exceptional circumstances criteria and that the forum supports the council's proposals in managing any affordability gap when adopting the NFF and the minimum funding guarantee rate. Those are the recommendations, colleagues, detailed at the top at page eleven. Can I ask, does anyone dissent? Okay, so given the absence of any folks against the proposition, that will be carried. I would now like to propose a motion to vary the agenda with everyone's permission and consent so that item nine, revised schools' budgets twenty four, twenty five, be the next item the committee considers for continuity and other sensible reasons. So that's moving to item nine next, everyone. Does anyone dissent to that adjustment? No? Thank you. That's good of you. So item nine, Mark, Strategic Finance Lead for the Council, to present the report.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So the report is to note the contents of the report, support the local authorities' proposals relating to the available DSG reserves and also the approval of the transfer of point five percent funding from the schools' block to the high needs block to support the financial sustainability. By way of background, so dedicated schools granted a ring fence grant and can only spend in accordance with the schools' annual year's finance regulations. A revision of the budget is necessary each year to reflect the under and over spends. Underspends are automatically carried forward and the Schools Forum is asked to consider the utilisation of any underspends or address any overspends. As you'll be aware of the national picture on high need spending, DFE oversight is there to ensure any overspends are recovered. And in place at the moment in time, there is a statutory override, which is in place until March twenty six, whereby DSG deficits at the end of the financial year have to be treated into a separate reserve. The scale of the DSG deficits is causing concern amongst local authority finances, where growing DSG deficits without a recovery plan are expecting the overall financial, expecting to impact the overall financial position of local authorities and potentially is going concern status. So the ESFA do have a number of programmes running, which we've obviously referred to before, namely the Safety Bell Programme, which targets the highest DSG deficits. They've then got the Delivering Better Value Programme that supports the next level down. And then you've then got the overall support. So at this moment in time, Lincolnshire is not part of those, but it anticipates it will fall into the general support based on the current spending trajectory levels. So there continues to be an increasing number of local authorities that are incurring a deficit on their overall DSG, largely as a result of their high need spending. The latest ISOS report from this year identified at the end of March twenty four estimated DSG deficits of over three point two billion. So and that's despite quite a significant increase in overall funding from central government. So that just shows you the scale and the severity of the challenges relating to high needs area. And it also anticipates that over just across this financial year, it will be potentially over a billion pounds more spending than the current budget allocations across those local authorities. So in terms of Lincolnshire's position, so in terms of Lincolnshire's cumulative DSG underspend brought forward from March twenty four, that was fourteen point three million. And this reflects the position of the net underspend of one point four million on to twenty three, twenty four financial performance. And those under and overspends can be seen within Appendix A. There is also existing commitments against that underspend of one point three million, which is referred in Appendix B. A majority of those relate to twenty four, twenty five spending and those have been reviewed. Referring back to the Schools Forum of October twenty three, when this report was last provided, the Schools Forum supported the local authorities' proposal to support the sustainability of the DSG in the short and medium term by earmarking the available DSG reserves to meet those ongoing financial challenges and to set a prudent budget and also to allow time for transformational work and also to embed change into practices and which will hopefully have an impact on spending levels. But like nationally, Lincolnshire have seen significant growth in demand and prices within this period with more children, young people requiring specialist support, increasing the need for specialist placements. And this is whereby mainstream schools are unable to meet need. At this moment in time, the forecast in-year position is just short of thirteen million, based on quarter two. And we were only anticipating a forecast overspend of eight million. So as you can see, the position has escalated and we're seeing that consistent growth of level of demand. So what this means is that additional reserves usage would leave no future capacity in the next twelve months. And clearly, there's the significant risks of the local authority going into it and overall dedicated schools grant overspend in the next twelve months. With the nature of the services that High Needs Block provides, it is demand-driven, it is large and it is very difficult to change spending levels quickly, as can be demonstrated with a number of local authorities and their size of deficits. As I've outlined, we're not in an ESFA programme at this moment in time. However, we will certainly end up in that position, particularly with the current in-year forecast position. On page sixty six, it provides a bit of context in terms of where Lincolnshire sits, but also there's also further context within the consultation document, where actually our two main areas of expenditure relate to the number of exclusions. And Lincolnshire is very high nationally and obviously above county, county, county council comparisons and also the EHC levels as well. And what we're seeing here is that if these trajectories continue, clearly that position, their financial position will worsen and hence why we're bringing forward proposals today to try and work towards achieving a sustainable budget. So the autumn budget, so moving on to page sixty seven, in terms of the twenty five, twenty six considerations. The autumn twenty four budget did announce an extra two point three billion overall in terms of national funding formula, schools' funding, pupil premium and SEND. One billion of this related to funding for SEND, which was obviously very welcomed. And its intention was to support the reforms in SEND, although the Treasury predicts that it would be very likely to be used to meet those or support those in-year deficits. And essentially, that's what we will be seeing in Lincolnshire. We haven't actually been provided with the value in terms of what we are likely to receive next year. That's going to be later on in the month, but it suspects that it will be around the eight million pound mark. So therefore, it will partly support the current structural overspend, but obviously not meet in the ongoing challenges and growth and relating to demand and also cost increases as well. So hasn't necessarily changed the position in terms of where we'll be going in the next twelve months. And the reality is, without any further measures, spending will escalate and if the demands continue. And I think this is the point of reference in the requirement for specialist placements. And there's over four hundred children that are placed in independent placements and these are at quite a significant cost to the High Needs Block, at seventy two thousand on average per place. So therefore, a change does need to be brought and we're, Lincolnshire working with schools and key stakeholders to bring about that to ensure that we can set a sustainable budget going forward. So difficult decisions are required and to work towards this, additional investment is necessary to alleviate some of those at the scale of the potential deficits. Lincolnshire hasn't sought a school block transfer, like many local authorities have. The local authority has been very much supportive of trying to replicate the national funding formula to give as much money to those schools. However, the council is proposing a point five percent school block transfer for twenty five, twenty six only and this would be an annual decision. The council considers it to be a fair apportionment for twenty five, twenty six and it would bring in additional three million pounds to support those activities, which you can see on page sixty eight. And what those intentions are, it is to try and bring about change and supporting schools to see where we can make an impact and support schools, retain and support pupils within mainstream settings or indeed resource-based provisions on school sites. It should also be noted that Lincolnshire's financial position, we do receive protection funding. So we do receive funding above the national funding formula, which at this moment in time remains protected. But again, that's something we just need to be aware of. What that would mean in terms of the point five percent school block transfer, it would, based on indicative figures, would see an ORPU reduction of one point zero eight percent. And you'll see there on page sixty eight, the deductions in per pupil funding that would be taken subject to the Schools Forum approval. So in terms of the consultation, which obviously Lizzie has just referred to, in terms of this question, there was twenty one schools responded to that consultation, twenty of which were mainstream schools, which were actually fifty fifty split between yes and no. And then there was one special school that voted in favour. So overall, a fifty percent of schools that supported the change, albeit fifty percent were four of fifty percent against in terms of the mainstream schools. And that includes maintained and academy schools. In terms of those in support, the recognition was that the growing demand and its costs and it requires funding to support this. It remains a fair and transparent and pragmatic approach and they do hope the investment will improve the financial position going forward. But what you'll see on page sixty eight is a number of activities that we feel that will have an impact in supporting schools, best meet the needs of children. We've sent such a send workforce, an enhancement of the pupil referral team to support transitions, a behaviour support review, an inclusion and effective team to implement effective inclusion practices. And then the phase two of the special schools and SEND strategy, which is about enhanced resource-based provision. And so we're very much of the view that it's about supporting children in their mainstream settings wherever possible. So the desire remains to balance, to achieve a balanced, sustainable budget, but clearly very challenging in this situation. And we consider transformation to be a key part of that and working with partners such as schools. So in in summary, we've been in a good financial position in Lincolnshire. However, in light of the increasing demand and costs rises in twenty four, twenty five, it's forecast that the available DSG underspend will be utilised to meet our structural in-year deficit. The Autumn Budget announcement was welcomed. However, this will partly contribute to the structural in-year deficit, but not meet those growing demand trajectories. And a school block transfer to the High Needs Block is sought to support Lincolnshire working towards achieving that balanced budget through additional investments. Obviously, we're we're very keen to try and minimise the the overspend to the DSG. So in terms of this, this is a where a decision that we'll be seeking from the Schools Forum in terms of the school block transfers. So I'll hand over back to you, Josh.
Thank you, Mark. So colleagues, Mark's given us a a detailed walk through there and has over a number of years whilst emphasising the prudent management and the contribution all schools and the authority have made to stability has trailed the potential for this reality to to come to Lincolnshire. And I suppose that time is is now for us. There are proposals contained that Mark's summarised. Firstly, before we move to that, comments or questions, everyone, please. Simon, please, and then I'll come to you, Alan.
Sorry, thank you very much. Thank you, Mark. I've I've got, I think, four questions, one of which might be a statement. I'm not sure at this point, but if I may. The first one was just page sixty six, the graph send pressure index. Just so I fully understood it, because there wasn't a lot of information necessarily around it. Suspension rates and exclusion rates due to the title, are they suspension rates and exclusion rates for send only students? Or is that within the local authority or exclusions?
That would be all exclusions.
Thank you. As a bit of a statement, if you can take anything back to the DFE, I think from schools and talking to a number of colleagues of mine, exclusion is cheaper than long-term suspension for some schools. And particularly with finding alternative provision at the moment. And in terms of financial savings, maybe there's work to be done at governmental level about how schools provide education for students who've been suspended for more than five days. I think would be an interesting discussion to have. My second question was, actually, seventy two thousand pounds on average per student. How does that compare nationally?
I think it's a mixed economy, Simon. I think on what we see in not only in independent send placements, but also in children in care placements as well. This is a highly unfavourable market from a customer perspective. They are very much dictating the prices and because of the increase in demand and limited supply, they were able to drive those prices up. And you've probably been heard that the DFE have been watching this. They haven't gone as far as sort of trying to regulate this. But clearly, it is an area that is causing a lot of concern. We are looking at opportunities in terms of knowing that we do need the the places there. For is there opportunities for block purchases rather than spot purchases? And we're seeing financial benefits to Lincolnshire for doing that arrangement because we know the demand is there. Albeit, it is causing then a significant burden on the DSG whatever way, but just at a much lower cost. So yes, we do, in terms of, I haven't got the benchmarking data to hand. But I know in terms of our commission team and the way we're looking at doing this, we are trying to drive cost down. And we'll also review placements during the period to see whether any step downs and support can be taken to reduce the overall cost as well. But what we want to try and do is move away from that reliance on the independent sector. We want to try and manage that internally and that's where the resource-based provisions opportunity comes in. So yes, they may not be able to be within the mainstream school in itself, but actually a more supported, supported and targeted approach within the school environment, supporting those send needs is something that we're looking at. And we feel that's a much more cost-effective position, but also better for the pupils as well. So a number of strategies there, but these are things that will take time. And then I think, so we may see costs grow further before which time we'll then start seeing these new investments being put in place. But it did an obviously a significant concern and it's a huge proportion of the overall spending on the on the High Needs Block.
And my final question that you'll be really pleased to hear, page seventy one. When I looked at external send specialist placements, the overspend on that represented somewhere around about eighteen, nineteen percent of the total overspend. And I just wondered what the projected effect of phase two would be on the amount that the amount that that overspend would come down over time.
Okay, yes, again, really good point. So that's very much part of the, so within the consultation document, there was a link to our strategy, which is sort of that phase two, and it referred to that cost avoidance arrangement. So depending on the type of provision, but we use the independent as that benchmark. So you were talking around fifty thousand cost avoidance between between the two, so quite substantial, quite substantial and and no real clear benefit in terms of the additionality from a service and child perspective. So yeah, we're talking around those margins. Clearly, the rates will change, I mean, for for each individual placement. But broadly, that's the cost avoidance. And that's where I was going through that process in terms of our council process in terms of decision making, because we feel that's the right way to go for the children, but also for high need spending.
So so in essence, us agreeing to this today effectively puts phase two into a position more so that we will reduce costs in the longer term.
That's exactly that. So that's the whole point in this. These are investments to try and stem the flow. Timing of this is still being modelled in terms of when they go live and the impact that will have. But one hopes that we can contain the spending more within our internal provision arrangement, which is much more cost effective and operationally effective. And therefore, in time, one hopes that not only will create sustainability, but also flexibility within the system to support the growing send costs within schools. Because there there is obviously a prioritisation that goes on in terms of the the High Needs Block at this moment in time.
Thank you for all my questions and thank you very much, Mark, for this succinct and positive answers there. Thank you.
Thank you both. Alan, come to you next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Simon actually asked a couple of the questions I was going to ask. But I would just want you to check, Mark, when you were talking to the paper, you said that we were looking at this for one academic year and then the following academic year, we look at it again to try and decide what we're doing with the extra monies. And in your comments, you were saying about the fact that in theory, by putting the extra money in over the next one or two years, that might actually reduce some of the extra costs because we are able to keep the children in their normal settings. Is that, is that the theory?
It is. That is the theory, yes. So I mean, the central government have obviously invested quite significant funds in and we're still seeing a significant gap in that. Clearly, we are led by statutory and guidance and regulations, which is obviously something that this new government is is looking at. But yeah, so as part of any school block transfer, it does relate to twenty five, twenty six only. So if we were to ask for a further year, whether it's point five or more, we would have to come back to the Schools Forum to seek approval for that. So it is solely for twenty five, twenty six. And yes, we want to be showing, as the ESFA does, is that this investment from the Schools Budget will make a difference in terms of those spending. And that's where we have tried to to consider where those opportunities are in terms of transitions, whether it's workforce training or indeed the resource-based provision. So it was trying to see an impact to the investment at which we can then come back to you and show, look, it is making a difference.
Good. No, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alan. Good afternoon, Martin, please come in.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, colleagues. And I just wanted to pick up on a on a couple of points really around the questions that Simon was making. So phase two of the specialist provisions project would would actually have the potential impact of twenty five million pounds of cost avoidance on the High Needs Block away from the independent sector. So the strategies that we're suggesting and deploying really do have a strategic impact that I would want the Schools Forum to be mindful of. And part of that suite of interventions is that additional resource to support and reduce demand. And and this system can lend itself to focusing on what the local authority needs to do. But I just wanted to kind of really enhance and highlight the importance of the stakeholder and partnership of special educational needs and disabilities in Lincolnshire. So it isn't just about local authority. It's about our ICB, it's about our parent care reform, and it's about our schools and educational settings, all coming together to be part of the solution to move some of this further forward. And to that end, I just wanted to make the real clear connection around the pressure on the High Needs Block is around send, but it is also around alternative provision. And you'll be receiving a report later today around permanent exclusions and suspensions with a bit more detail. All of these funnel demand financially and sufficiency wise from the High Needs Block. So I think it's important to accept that scene and that connection. I'd also just want to say that although the rates to the consultation were maybe not really very high, and I think every school leader will have heard me speak about high needs and cost pressures at every leadership briefing over the last three years. And so our community should be really aware of the pressures, the demands and the strategies that we're trying to implement to support a more calibrated system, notwithstanding the national challenges. So just wanted to set that scene, Chair, for for Schools Forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. And and for those less familiar, you mentioned ICB, which is the Integrated Commissioning Board. Is that right? And that would include health and care colleagues or just health?
Yeah, so we have an integrated commissioning strategy, but ICB is our integrated care board, which brings together all of our health partners. So the danger in acronyms and and abbreviations there, I guess, Josh.
Well, I I pretend to be informed and I got it wrong. So thank you for that clarity. Colleagues, any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll I'll permit myself one, Mark, if that's okay. And it's, I think it's important for us to recognise that, you know, certainly from from my experience in seven other authorities, every other authority has been in a an ESFA programme, either Delivering Better Value or Safety Valve Programme for some years now. And I've certainly emphasised that the investment, in in my view, that Lincolnshire committed some years ago now to the special communities projects and and major transformation of AP has has enabled young people to thrive in in a way that's been more cost effective than elsewhere. But we we are where we are now. So the 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 question with that backdrop, I suppose, is the forecast has been significantly blown out of the water. And, you know, that eight to twelve million plus. And in asking, in seeking this investment from School Forum, are you able to offer any assurances about that demand trajectory and whether our forecasts now are realistic?
Yes, I mean, this is obviously the trajectories and seeing them, if they're continuing at this current level, they will, the deficit, in-year deficit will grow substantially. However, we are working internally and with external partners in terms of refining some of those trajectories and also sort of unmitigated and mitigated actions. So as a result of some of these investments, what do we consider to be the target in terms of those mitigations? And we will be certainly tracking those and and moderating that in terms of if we need to make further decisions or or changes to that. But yeah, that is something that is currently underway this moment in time in terms of those trajectories because it is a continually moving picture. But we will hope to have a much more defined position in in January, once that budget setting and trajectory work has been has been finalised.
You, Mark, I can see that both Martin has turned his camera on and Heather has asked to speak. So I will let you decide between you who goes first.
I'll I'll go first. So so I just wanted to say, in terms of the trajectory planning, one of the big unknowns we've got is what's going to happen nationally. So you you will have all heard significant talk about national reform. Lincolnshire is well represented around the table with regard to send national reform. And I think that has the potential to really change where this money ends up being spent, but not within this year. So I think Mark's absolutely right. We're getting better and better and better at predicting. We're getting better at predicting where population growth doesn't correlate to send growth. So our population grows, but our send growth is much higher than that. We're doing lots of work around why that is, why it's, you know, different in different areas, why it's different for different schools and how we support where we see that need emerging in in very localised areas. But in in reality, the national reforms are what the country needs to stop this, the trajectory continuing. At the minute, there is so much out of our control with regard to tribunals, with regard to parental preference. That means what we can do to bring those trajectories down, we're doing absolutely everything we can and everything that's in the paper will help. But the factors outside of our control are really significant. So Lincolnshire's spent a hundred and forty million pounds already building new provision. And the problem is it fills as soon as we build it. So the the reality is what we need to do is really think about how we turn that that around. And we'll need some help in terms of national policy to do that. And then we'll need to work together, as Martin says, across the partnership to implement those reforms when they come because they won't be easy. This is a system that has been kind of spiralling out of control since the changes in twenty fourteen. And therefore, it's going to take some time to stabilise this system, to get parental confidence in changes and school confidence as well as expectations change for for everybody. So I think that we, I I appreciate what you said, Josh. I think we are, we've mitigated everything as long as we possibly can. We continue to mitigate it. And that's because schools work with us, but actually the system is getting to a point where it's unsustainable.
Thank you both. Martin?
Thank you, Chair. Heather covered my points that I was going to make, so nothing to add.
Thank you very much. That's helpful from my perspective. Other members, any, Michelle, please come in.
Afternoon, everyone. I'm really heartened by what I've heard in terms of the reassurances, both for the next year and in the longer term. And I think colleagues know me well enough to know that I'm a collaborative colleague on the education front and think that everything that's going on in terms of both the demand meeting expectation and the plans for the future to address the needs of children in mainstream school where possible is something I'm wholly committed to. But can I just, can I just flag this up and state the obvious? Based on the ARPU changes, this is going to mean a reduction to my school funding circa fifty thousand pounds. And that worries me. And I think we mustn't lose sight of the fact that whilst all of us represent schools across the different sectors in Lincolnshire, this is going to have an impact on the chalk face. And I'm sitting here now thinking, where am I going to find that shortfall from?
Thank you, Michelle. That's a really important point. Anyone else? And colleagues, it's important, you know, if there are views or or areas to to debate further, we do so now because we are going to move to a decision shortly on both the recommendations. So I will give it, given the materiality of this, I'll give it another another go. Andrew, thank you. Please come in.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking at the figures. I have a question about when the increases and investments start to take effect. Are they based on starting in April or are these sort of part-year figures for the academic year and probably start to take effect in October?
Hi, Andrew. Yes, it's it's actually a mix, actually. Some of the work has already started. And some of those were, if you look in Appendix B in terms of some of those commitments, their transition support and the reintegration team, we've had to already do that. And then obviously evidence the use of the block is 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 for me the right thing to do because that's what it's there for in terms of those investments and and seeing change. But it is a mix. It is a mix in terms of that period. But that's what our estimated cost would be for twenty five, twenty six at this moment in time.
Okay, I'll just follow up on that if I may, Chair. I'm just I'm just thinking that the year after, you you will still be investing and maybe the full year effect probably isn't going to be evident until the following year. That's what I was getting at, I think.
Okay, yeah. I mean, a number of those things are full year effect. In terms of the hubs, this is a work in progress because we're still going through the change protocol. So in terms of the timing and when they're starting, but actually the costs that we've identified there, what we're looking to do is actually further expand that beyond what that that is currently identified in terms of number of resource base. So we're looking to expand that because we feel that there is those financial efficiencies to be had with that and obviously improved performance. And just going back to your earlier point about the deduction. So yes, that will relate to twenty five, twenty six. And just going back to your earlier point about the deduction. So yes, that will relate to twenty five, twenty six. For maintained schools, obviously, it will hit from um April. Um for academies, it will be September when that change takes place.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew and Mark. Um final call then, colleagues, for any comments or questions before we move to the um the decisions we have in front of us. Okay, so I am going to take these uh one by one, Mark, with your permission, if that's okay. Thank you. So firstly, it's proposed that we continue to support the local authorities' proposal. Of using DSG reserves to meet the in-year high needs block deficit. I'm going to first ask if there is any any colleagues who dissent to that proposal. Okay. In which case, that's um confirmed, Mark. And then secondly. We are asked to approve the transfer of naught point five percent funding from the schools block to the high needs block. For the twenty five, twenty six financial year to support high needs block financial sustainability. And um for complete this uh Mark and Jess, I'm going to propose that we um we do a four or against, given the diversity of views that have been shared. Is that okay?
If that's fine with me, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Can I um seek your support, Jess, in doing so?
Oh, yes, Josh, that is absolutely fine. Would you like me to lead on that?
If you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate.
No problem. So shall I go one by one with the attendees? Yes, is that all right?
Yes, please. I think I think it um it affects lots of schools collectively, but in individual ways. I think it's important to give. Voice rather than loading the. I have to dissent on my own um vibe that could emerge otherwise. Is that is that okay?
Yep, no problem. So as I read your name, may you please just confirm whether you're for or against the recommendation, please? So I'll start with um Amy Spencer.
Uh thank you. Um it's not my area of expertise, I have to say. We're nursery provision, so I I I have tried to understand fully and I would support the judgement with a four. But I do have further questions that I think I'll have to look further to, but thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Uh Janet Kennedy?
Hi, I'm for the proposals.
Thank you, Janet. Um Alan How?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm for the proposal. That's fine.
Thank you, Alan. Um Colin Clay?
Uh yes, I'm for the proposals.
Thank you, Colin. Michelle Anderson?
Four.
Thank you, Michelle. Andrew Everard?
I'm for the proposals.
Thank you, Andrew. Um we have Simon Pickett.
Four.
Thank you, Simon. Uh Tristan Revel?
Four.
Thank you, Tristan. Uh Josh Greaves?
Four.
Thank you, Josh. Um Andrew Watts? Andrew Watts. Yes, I think.
Still showing us online.
Yes, he is. Um I can seek his um preference afterwards, if you like, I can send him a message. Um but either way, if I missed anybody, um. Or anybody I haven't asked, who's in the call? Lovely. Well, with that being said, and excluding um. Andrew, uh that is unanimous, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Ben. I I'm for the I'm for the proposal.
Oh, thank you, Andrew. In that case, yes, that's carried, Chair. Thank you.
Great. And and thank you, Jess, and everyone for taking the time to do that. I slightly misread the room, but I I think better to have checked than assumed anything. So. Um so that's that's carried um supportive of both recommendations, Mark. Thank you so much. So um we are now moving on to and back to item six, so back in the the normal running order. I think that's correct. And that again is is yourself, Mark, on de-delegation of maintained primary school budgets twenty five, twenty six.
Thank you very much. Yeah. So in terms of the recommendations, there is there is actually two um segments that uh we need to seek agreement for today. Uh consideration uh from the maintained school representatives. So the first one is about the de-delegation budget. Uh which relates to uh primary maintained schools and then um school representatives for all maintained schools. Um uh for the for the second part. So in terms of um de-delegations, just by way of reminder, um LA's are permitted to seek a de-delegation of budgets. For some services um for maintained schools. And this is all allowable within the the schools and early years financial uh regulations. Um this has been operational for um a number of years now. Um and and this is a retained reserve whereby any and under any under or over spends um are kept within. That EAMAC reserve um for use for primary maintained schools. For twenty three, twenty four, um uh by just a backward um look in terms of um what we agreed. We agreed um funding uh areas such as contingency, which was supporting um termination of employment costs for schools in financial difficulties, which was. Administered through the staffing reduction panel. And then we have then um the School Intervention Fund for exceptional unforeseen costs. The School Improvement Services and then the Ethnic Minority and Traveler Education Team. Um it was only for maintained uh primary maintained schools and no de-degations were sought from uh maintained secondary schools. The community funderspend that March twenty four was one point two seven eight million. And an overall modest underspend of seventeen thousand during that financial year of twenty three, twenty four. Um there had been previously a number of agreements with the um maintained um primary um school members regarding use of that and and I'll I'll explain. Um those those different components. So the first were related to additional one-off invest. Investment relating to education locality leads to support our statutory responsibilities and also um an enhancement. Um in terms of those additional uh additional support. Of which two hundred and fifty five thousand up to August twenty six is there to support that sustained improvement. We then have the legacy of the two-year programme to increase pupil fluency, reading uh by year two. And um approaches to improvements in communication. Um and also about moving towards more a sustainable model. So we have the legacy um of that in terms of the sixteen thousand carried forward into twenty four, twenty five. Some really positives in terms of what we're seeing in terms of overall performance. Um um through these many initiatives is that the percentage of pupils achieving reading, writing and maths. Um are above um uh the standard expected and we've seen those rise again. Um and overall results on average are increasing. So very much an upward trajectory in all of those areas in terms of that language, um audit shift and and less schools. Um are within that additional um intervention. The focus of this service is very much on uh intervening early and supporting schools in driving improvement activity. And and as I say, overall, we performed well um last year. There was also um approval in October twenty three um from the forum relating to. Um further proposals to continue supporting that journey of improvement in education standards. Um and the development, the council have developed plans in terms of how they can support leaders to monitor effectively. Uh and assess the performance um of children through the key stages and also strategies to secure those interventions. So the programme is to to run for four years, um and the the commitment on that is six hundred and twenty five thousand. What we have remaining is three hundred and eighty two thousand. And there are a number of uh variables within the de-delegation budgets, which are outlined in in page twenty nine at the bottom. Such as the number of maintained numbers, the the number of supported interve- interventions. Um and and obviously, uh much tighter financial arrangement going forward, therefore very much more supportive. Um responsive support is required going forward. So it's considered a degree of prudence to earmark three hundred thousand to support potentially those variables um during that period. So moving on to page thirty um of the pack, in terms of the propose of, in terms of the the plans that we have in place and agreed for twenty four, twenty five. The following section sets out the twenty four, twenty five position and the agreed de-delegation amounts. Which you can see within the contingency and the Ethnic Minority and Traveler Education Team. Um so those pupil um per pupil deductions. Have taken place in terms of devolved budgets and it finances the following um activities, which you can see on that page. So the current approach is very much about supporting schools in a hybrid model. With central capacity of the team, but also en- enabling um targeted support through additional specialist activities to support schools um rapid improvements. In terms of the twenty five, twenty six proposals, which is requiring a um a decision for from the uh maintained primary schools. Um is to continue operating this hybrid model of uh support to schools. Um with a continuation of the contingency rate of twenty nine thousand twenty three um um in twenty five, twenty six, same rate as what we see in in twenty four. And twenty five, which will then support the locality leads and the additional school improvement um activities, what I've outlined. Um and what we will do is in terms of um because costs generally do increase, we will need to flex. Um and respond to uh potential changes in demands within that quantum of funding because we recognise the the challenges facing um schools going forward. So that three hundred thousand, which I've referred to, will respond to anything in addition to that. The MTEC service, which is made up of staffing, requires a fixed budget and at this moment in time, um that rate has been established at eight pound fifteen. But that's currently an indicative rate and will be confirmed when the October school census um is agreed. So a decision will be required on that from the primary maintained schools. If I then move on to services for maintained schools, general duties. So this is something that we have touched on uh before, but actually no decision in terms of um um a form of de-delegation to take place in this area. So if I just explain about the general duties, so this relates to our statutory responsibilities that we hold for the local authority holds for our maintained schools. Such as statutory and regulatory duties, such as monitoring and compliance, asset management, such as general um landlord duties and and the monitoring of the national curriculum assessment. The government ended funding for the education services grants, although um uh there was lots of changes in that prior to the national formula coming in place, impacting. Schools um themselves. So that money was um ended in in September twenty seventeen. And the local authorities um managed that cost, um that cost pressure and no requests were sought. Um from school budgets um at that time and that position is being reviewed um annually. So prior to the mainstream schools' national formula reforms, the council had a central budget within the DSG to support school audits. Um this was budget was therefore devolved through the national funding formula changes. Um however, what we would expect is that school audit should take place as a matter of um routine business activity. And something that um our academy colleagues will be very familiar with in terms of their exposure to internal and and external audit. In terms of the internal audit, it's to provide that independent objective opinion on adequacy of operating arrangements. Um they're very much in a supportive manner to provide assurance to the leadership team and governors about those internal controls. Are performing in line with policies and complying with guidance and best practice. The local authority uh wished to re-establish the routine audits of all maintained schools. Where schools will receive an audit um on a three-year cycle and that falls within that statutory and regulatory duties of internal audit arrangements. So with the agreement to the maintained schools um uh only um across across the sector. Um and the the council is proposing to retain an amount to support um the delivery of of this um audit programme. It requires a budget of a hundred and seventy thousand um and a single rate would be set uh based on the proposals outlined here. Um an indicative rate of five pound fifty seven per pupil. Recognising that maintained uh primary schools' de-delegation reserve um availability, the council is proposing to utilise. Eighty two thousand of that, which will then bring that balance down to three hundred thousand. To support a temporary reduction for the primary maintained schools um for school audits in twenty five, twenty six. The reason why it's not for other areas is that that is money that has been uh paid in um by the primary maintained schools and therefore it. It remains a right that we, that money is only distributed and supporting primary maintained schools such as this. Therefore, a temporary rate reduction will reduce it to two pounds um in twenty five. You'll see there on page thirty three, the um the what a school audit uh entails and and how comprehensive it is and how supportive. It will be in terms of supporting school leaders um and governors. In terms of uh this decision, it is for twenty five, twenty six, but um but in in all cases, we do look to try and support in principle for. Uh a following year, twenty six to twenty seven. However, we will still need to come back on an annual basis to seek permission um of the forum. So that concludes um my my report, Josh, and happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mark. That's great. So colleagues, invitation from Mark there. Questions or comment? Please, Michelle.
Afternoon again. Uh Mark, can you just clarify? Because I did go to the um webinar uh that was held uh with regards to three-year audits. Um that are being reintroduced uh across maintained schools. Uh and there was talk then of the cost that would be charged to schools. Um dependent upon the size and scale and the number of days that uh people would be in and the number of auditors that would be required. So can you just clarify for me? Does that mean that as a maintained secondary school? In having the money paid via the agreement we're about to look at at the school forum. The maintained schools would now not be charged. The amounts that were indicated in the webinar that we all attended, where those costs were explained?
Hi, Michelle. Yes, so essentially um the 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 funding to support the delivery of this will be taken. The proposal is to be taken from a deduction from school budgets based on these rates. So there will be no outside charge unless. There is that follow-up. So for example, they received a poor audit and further work needed to be done. So whether that's no assurance or limited. Or where there are a primary account school. So where there are a primary account school, they have their own bank account. Therefore, there's additional. Additional um audit checks that are required, of which that should be at the cost of that school in terms of that additional, because they've made that decision. So yes, we felt that it was appropriate to do use the per pupil amount. So it brings in a pool. Um and 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 obviously each audit can be different. Um but um um but but in terms of the audit colleagues, they did say that actually the variability between small and big schools is not huge in terms of the amount of. Um time and days, but we felt appropriate for the per pupil deduction. And that per pupil deduction is something that is allowable. We can use any other alternative approach. And we felt that um it was probably more cost effective. To for um Lincoln County County Council's internal audit to to carry out this function from a cost benefit perspective. Um rather than trying to um well, increase scores to use alternative arrangements. Um but but essentially, it's a it's a pooled fund that will be contributed each year. And then schools will be on a cycle of of having um school audits um uh once every three years.
Yeah, that's great, Mark. Thanks for the clarification. And I can understand the timing. Uh of the delivery of those messages being slightly out of kilter because we had the webinar on the audits before we've had the school forums. Uh discussion and presentation of report today, but I think remembering how much of the questioning. Um in the chat on that webinar was about how much is this going to cost? Uh my school to have the audit in. I I think obviously, I'm sure it's your intention that the next cycle, as this goes round, to make it clear that. That would be amount uh weighted by school size uh through this forum. Uh agreement rather than schools then having to find money within already tight budgets to pay for the audit.
Yeah, yeah. So so the deductions will be made um um once we determine the school budgets, we'll be doing a deduction at that point. Um uh before devolving out the monies. Um and we we do feel it's a fair approach and it's something that we've applied. Obviously, in the primary sector and um the delegations, obviously, for secondaries, there hasn't been that pool. But we feel it's it's the right thing to do um for all maintained schools to have that um support in terms from an internal audit um to support you. Um achieve the best value um and also improvements in in practices. Um so what we'll do is, but obviously this will be an annual decision. Although the audits will be every three, every once every three years, we will be coming back to the school forum. Um and we'll be obviously receiving feedback from yourselves in terms of um how that service is going and the benefits um that will come from that. Uh and therefore we can add that sort of engagement on an annual basis.
Lovely. Thanks very much.
Thank you, uh Mark and Michelle. And you've explained that um methodology, Mark, and its rationale really clearly from my perspective. Amy would like to ask. Whether you could clarify the position for maintained nursery schools, please?
Yeah, it'll be followed a similar approach. So um but just if I just put to one side then like special schools where. We will be actually putting a rating of four point two five um on the per pupil amount because of their. Um the smaller size and and obviously the um but actually the additional um staffing and other things that come with um special schools. For nursery schools, we'll be adopting that per pupil sum um on on census date. Um and very much how we'll apply that in the um in the primary sector. So it'll be a per pupil sum um that will be deducted in. And based on the current modelling, it's it's using um the Academy's paper in terms of the five hundred and sixty. Um uh children on on roll. So that's where the the um calculations have been born from. Um but obviously, we will be doing an updated one from the October census. But hopefully that clarifies the point. It's a per pupil deduction.
Does that help? Does that help, Amy?
Thank you. Yes, that does clarify. Obviously, we have part-time children, so it's going to be interesting working forwards and backwards, but it'll, I'm sure it'll resonate. Thank you.
Thank you again, both. Any further comments or questions before we move to the recommendations? Okay, thank you all. I'm going to take this in two parts, Mark, because the, as you emphasised, this applies to maintained settings that only represent this, but the first few recommendations, three, apply purely to Laura Martin, though she's absent today, Callum Clay, Alan Howe and Tony Stevens, so I will need to ask each of you whether you were voting for, against or abstaining in relation to first, whether you agree to the proposals for the use of de-delegation reserves, second, agree to the de-delegation of the budget for the period twenty five, twenty six, and then third, in principle, whether you support the same arrangements for twenty six, twenty seven. So if I can come to Callum first, for, against or abstention, please.
For all the proposals.
Thank you, Callum. Alan?
Yeah, I'm happy just for particularly the, the de-delegation, the primary school budgets, as everybody is probably aware of, being stretched and under pressure and a lot of the time, primary schools are being asked to restructure and that generally might increase redundancy costs, so anything that helps in that line is, certainly gets my support on those fronts.
Thank you for those words of endorsement, Mark. And finally, Tony? Jess, is Tony not here?
I'm sorry, I've just popped it in the chat. Yes, Tony gave last minute apologies, unfortunately.
Are we satisfied that we have a, a resolution on this matter then? Of those present, hundred percent in favour? Right, thank you, Callum and Alan. Secondly then, and this applies to Callum, Alan, Amy and Michelle, and Michelle Anderson, and it's, is for two recommendations. Firstly, to agree to the services for maintained schools' budget for the period twenty five, twenty six, and then secondly, and again in principle only, but to support the arrangements for twenty six, twenty seven as set out. So if I can go, Callum first again?
Yes, I'm for both proposals.
Thank you very much. Alan?
I'm, I'm happy, Josh, for both and I support Mark's thing about how difficult it is to try and find external auditors at what you could describe a reasonable cost. We haven't managed to do that yet, so I fully support that bit.
There's two endorsements there, Mark. Thank you. Amy?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the complexity. We are looking forward to the support and challenge. Thank you very much. Yes, I'm for.
Thank you very much. And finally, Michelle?
Yes, I'm for both. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. So all recommendations carried there, Mark, and thank you so much for talking and working us through those. We're going to move on to item number seven, colleagues, section two five one, Budget Statement twenty four, twenty five, and Lizzie, I, I think it's fair to say that some of the substance, much of the substance of this has been covered in preceding items, so if you could give us a, you know, a, throw out the pertinent points, please, over to you.
No worries. Thank you, Josh. So this report is normally presented at the June meeting, however, the submission date of the return was stated in previous years, resulting in it being presented today. The report provides the schools' form with a copy of the section two five one budget statement for the twenty four, twenty five financial year. Each year, the local authority are required to submit an education and social care budget statement, commonly referred to as section two five one. The return demonstrates the local authority's intentions in terms of spend for the year and page forty of the report details the steps the local authority took with the support of schools formed to, to address the affordability gap and adopted the national funding formula in twenty four, twenty five. The total dedicated scores grant for this year is six hundred and eighty-six million and attached to this report is a copy of the local authority table for twenty four, twenty five, which provides an overall picture of the funding being allocated. I'll now go through some of those key areas of the table. So the table is a standardised report and is split into two areas. The DSG, which includes those services that are discussed at schools forum, and that represents lines one point naught point one to one point ten point two, and areas of children's services where decisions are made by the council from lines two point naught point one and below. So in terms of this table then, the first line details the budgets for maintained primary, secondary and early years provision and includes the schools block of the DSG, of which ninety-nine point eight percent was devolved to schools, the remainder relates to gross. Within the high needs block, seventy-seven point seven eight percent is earmarked to be devolved to Lincolnshire schools, colleges and early years, with the remainder of funding for school support services. And the next few lines of the table relate to funding for high needs funding, top-up funding, targeted funding and out-of-county provision. So as part of Lincolnshire's strategy, the local authority is keen to support preventative measures that we've kind of already referred to in the previous paper and that represents lines one point two point eight on the table. So in terms of the early years block, that's allocated to the sector based on participation levels and is anticipated that of this block, ninety-six point nine three percent will be allocated to the early years sector by the end of the financial year, with the remainder of funding a number of statutory duties and that's in section one point three point one. So sections one point nine and one point ten detail the DSG recruitment. So the local authority retains funding for maintained schools, which is then delegated to those schools. However, delegated budgets for academies and academy special schools place funding is recouped from the local authority by the ESFA and paid directly to academies via their gag using LCC's agreed formula. In terms of the second half of the return and children's services, there are two areas of financial risk that are high-risk demand-led areas and these are home-to-school transport that occur in sections two point one point four to two point one point eight and children and care, care services, which is sections three point one point one to three point one point ten. There has been a significant increase in the spend to home-to-school transport and that's due to a number of factors, including an increase in number of eligible pupils being transported, the increase in number of HCPs and the impact that's having in terms of the fact that the special schools we've already discussed are full and therefore having to look at alternative special provision out of county and additional demand from pupils and groups of peoples that are vulnerable, including those requiring alternative provision and asylum-seeking children. Returning to the main body reports, Mark's already gone through the high needs block, so I won't go through that again, but in terms of a conclusion, officers will continue to review for this year any government policy announcements that implicate schools' funding and regulations to ensure full compliance. Financial monitoring of budgets will continue to be carried out throughout twenty four, twenty five, in accordance with the council's budget monitoring framework. We've already discussed in detail the high needs position that's detailed again in the reports, so the forum is asked to note the content of the report.
Thank you so much, Lizzie, and before I open to questions, I can't resist that yours is my favourite corporate, corporate backdrop.
Oh, with my sheep?
Yes, I just thought it was important to draw everyone's attention to that. Now, on a serious note, thank you again, Lizzie. The recommendation today is to note the report. Are there any questions or comments in relation to the two five one budget statement? Please, Simon, come on in.
Just, I appreciate you commenting on it, but it seems staggering to me every year that home-school transport at eighteen million and three million. Are there potential savings to be made within the authority on those due to scale? Is it just a general question going forwards?
I'll come in, Josh. Yes, I mean, this is, this is probably one of our most high-risk budgets that we've seen and we've actually seen it double in terms of spending over the last five to six years. We're over fifty million in terms of providing home-school transport. AP and SEND is our growing challenge, but we have seen since the pandemic, national living wage changes, Ukraine war, it's been the perfect storm, Simon, so actually we have seen those costs grow substantially. The chief executive and Heather are part of a board to try and drive forward transformation in this area in terms of are we operating efficiently, in terms of how we, how we do our business, how we can engage the market better, route optimisation. So we, we were forecasting a circa about five million pound overspend, but actually that's been brought down through route optimisation in this latest academic year. So clearly there is things to be at and to get at, but it is really challenging and this is, this is not just a Lincolnshire issue, it's, it's across the board, but it's compounded by the rurality of Lincolnshire and sort of every pupil is in sort of every spot of the county. So it is a really difficult arrangement and there is lots of scrutiny on that from an internal perspective. We are keen to try and manage those costs effectively in the way we're doing that and we're, we're looking at all, all opportunities to, to try and deliver better value in this area, but recognising it is, it is a real challenge.
Thank you very much, Mark. I think, yeah, it just frustrates me the way taxi drivers who drop students off at my school as well, but there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Simon and Mark. And Lizzie, anything to add to that or no? Colleagues, any, any further questions in addition to Simon's? Okay, so, thank you. Recommendation for us is to note the report and I propose we've done that. Does anyone dissent? In which case, thank you so much, Lizzie, for the update. And I'll move us on to item number eight and invite Geraldine in to talk to us about early years funding and childcare reform. Geraldine, please, over to you.
Thank you, Josh, and good afternoon, everyone. And so this report is intended to provide you with an update on the childcare reforms and our progress so far with the implementation of the new early years entitlements and the wraparound programme. So in April, we introduced the new entitlement for working parents for, with two-year-olds and from the beginning of this term, this has been rolled out to the working families with children from nine months. We've completed supply and demand mapping to assess the need for childcare places across the county for early years and a summary of the places required, the development work that we have undertaken so far and the developments still in progress is detailed on pages fifty through two fifty-two for you. This also shows the capital funding, investments made and future commitments that we have on our delivery plan. The government has also launched the school-based nursery project and since writing this report, actually that figure has already increased from three to seven schools that we're working with to complete applications by the nineteenth of December deadline. We'll also be sending out additional information to schools shortly regarding expressions of interest for any other schools that might like to be included in the next phase of that programme. Since the summer, we've seen really good take-up of the new entitlements and I think this is testament to the commitment of the childcare providers and schools across Lincolnshire. In autumn last year, we surveyed all providers to ask about the number of children already accessing childcare that may be eligible for the new entitlements. The survey responses showed over three thousand children in both the two-year-old and the nine-month-old age ranges and you can see from the data on page fifty-three there that the number of children accessing those places mirrors those, those numbers. So we're really pleased that the majority of parents that have accessed their, have accessed their codes and are now taking up the offer. We do continue to keep a close eye on the existing cohorts of children and I'm pleased that in the summer term, we still had a high take-up of the two-year-old offer available for families in receipt of additional support and so you can see the take-up levels are demonstrated there. The number of three and four-year-olds accessing their early years entitlement in Lincolnshire continues to fluctuate. We are undertaking extensive outreach activities to understand the reasons why parents might choose not to access provision and some of the information that we've already gathered shows that some children are attending and accessing their education places outside of Lincolnshire. So we've got an agreement with our regional leads in East Midlands to share data with them so that we understand what numbers and percentages that looks like. Some of the barriers linked to SEN or sufficiency of childcare is all being addressed with our, within our teams and next steps are being confirmed. We're also working closely with PAB for support with translation, the locality teams to support information for families through children's centres and family hubs and of course, working with social care, health and, and other colleagues where they might have direct contact with families. Statistics have been provided for you there regarding access to tax-free childcare and this is being widely promoted through all of our marketing and our website. We are awaiting confirmation of Lincolnshire's early years funding rates for the next financial year, following the spending plan announcements that we obviously had last month. Central spend will reduce next financial year from five percent to four percent and in Lincolnshire, we've already reduced our central spend to nearer three percent, which is the expected threshold for local authorities in the future. And I will of course bring you the early years national funding report in January where you'll need, to obviously, will need to seek your approval for any central spend next year. On page fifty-six, I've provided an overview for you of the statistics on places being developed across Lincolnshire as part of the wraparound programme. We've already agreed more than thirteen developments, I know there's thirteen listed there, but since again, writing the report, we've, we've already made progress on that number and, and schools have been really responsive to the wraparound team, which is great. There was a lot of engagement in the summer term and since returning in September, schools were all really progressing with applications for funding to support the development of breakfast and after-school provision across the county where it's needed. The total spending plan for that wraparound programme is shown on page fifty-seven and some of the additional activities have been explained for you there on page fifty-eight. We are aware that ministers are now considering funding for the wraparound for new and extended places planned to start in the next financial year, twenty five, twenty six, and they will be writing to local authorities to confirm the outcome of their decisions as soon as they are able. For now, we are continuing to plan the delivery of those places as far as we can until we receive that government confirmation. So just to summarise, awareness is obviously raising across the county on the childcare reforms, the availability of childcare places and for all age ranges. We are using joined-up approaches, collaborative working is progressing with a multitude of teams across the council and more widely with schools, childcare providers and partners. We are mindful of the challenges that the reforms have brought. We're working closely with the sector to be responsive to those as much as we possibly can, some of the areas being off-stud registration periods, staff recruitment and retention is still an area, rurality and of course, the availability of childcare provision. And we continue to trial various models of childcare delivery to support sustainability across all areas of Lincolnshire. We will be completing another childcare sufficiency assessment in the spring term to understand our position following the rollout of the new offers for early years and obviously completing some quality assurance with our schools that are developing breakfast and after-school provision to ensure that that's meeting needs and then we'll update our plans and respond to requirements for next September, when of course, the early years offers expand further to thirty hours. And right now, we are eagerly awaiting the DFE announcements on their spend plan for next year. Thank you. Thanks, Josh.
You and the rest of the sector, Geraldine. Thank you so much for that. Colleagues, anyone have any questions for Geraldine? I, I have one, if I may. The school-based nursery programme, Geraldine, my, my questions around just your, your view on the, the capital allocated to that, one hundred and fifty thousand per project, I concern that unless there are perfect classrooms available and ancillary space, a hundred and fifty grand doesn't go very far. I just wondered what the picture was across county.
Yes, so the, the application form that the DFE have sent is obviously quite comprehensive. They want schools to be considering the sufficiency of childcare already available, the space that you have and of course, what's available for us to utilise. I think in, in many schools and the ones that we're working with at the moment, a hundred and fifty thousand is reasonable where we are doing internal remodelling and I think in particular, what we're quite pleased about, if we do manage to successfully get any of those applications through that project, is it means that we free up some of the capital funding that we've got as part of the reforms to make sure that goes further as well. And so I think with some of the works that are needed in, in some schools, that a hundred and fifty thousand should, should be able to, to meet those, those remodelling that we're doing. Previously, that had been more of a concern because the government had originally sort of said it might be around forty thousand pounds, which definitely wouldn't have been sufficient. So I think raising it to a hundred and fifty has been a good decision and seems to be working so far with the schools that we're, that we're working with. seems to be working so far with the schools that we're that we're working with.
That's reassuring. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions before we move to the recommendation? No. So it is that we note the report. I suppose we've done so. Does anyone dissent? No. So thank you again, Geraldine.
Thanks, Josh.
We look forward to hearing from you in January, did you say?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. So having already covered agenda item nine, colleagues, we're moving now to invite Kate Kappa, Head of Service for Inclusion, to talk to us about alternative provision arrangements. Kate, over to you.
That's lovely. Thanks, Josh, and good afternoon, everybody. So as Josh has just said, uh this report uh is providing a summary of the alternative provision arrangements in Lincolnshire. And you'll see from uh page seventy-seven, the initial background sets out uh the statutory duty on local authorities under section nineteen of the Education Act relating to exclusions. Uh and then further sets out the duties for local authorities around medical needs and the layers of responsibility uh within this for uh both schools, local authorities and parent carers. Seventy-eight, uh page seventy-eight of the report then moves into the uh commissioning arrangements in the local authority to meet the local authority's duties uh with information around our commissioning arrangements with Springwell and Heckington House in relation to our behavioural AP uh and with the local authority expanding the AP portfolio this last academic year to include an element of home tutoring providers to meet the significant increase in demand. The report then goes into uh and sets out the arrangements of Pilgrim Hospital School in relation to our meeting uh the local authority's duties around medical needs. As you move into page seventy-nine um of uh the report, um it sets out the uh data that's underlying um regarding exclusions and suspensions. Uh the first section is in relation to the national picture and as panel members uh well, as as forums hopefully are aware, um there's a a year's lag uh in relation to this information uh around national picture. And but what we can see from the data is uh whilst being reported in the media a lot about that increase in exclusions in the academic year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh what we saw uh in Lincolnshire is that we saw quite a significant higher rate of uh both permanent and permanent exclusions and suspensions uh that when compared to to the rate in England and uh the rate uh regionally across the the East Midlands. What we're able to look at then is our local data for the last academic year. And what we saw is after um that significant increase of over a hundred percent in twenty-two, twenty-three, there was a further uh just short of eight percent increase on that in the academic year twenty-three, twenty-four. And the table at the bottom of page seventy-nine sets out that position across the um Lincolnshire schools in relation to primary, secondary and special. I think it's worth pointing out, as it does in the report here, that uh we saw a slight decrease in the number of exclusions being issued by primary and a decrease uh within our special schools. But we saw a a further uh subsequent increase uh in the number of exclusions being issued uh by our our secondary schools. However, as you'll see from the report, um I think it's uh really important to point out this isn't seen across all of our schools, which is a real positive. Um and we still have a number of uh schools that are either not excluding or resorting to uh low numbers of exclusions. Uh and we have a small pocket of uh secondary schools that are resorting to high levels of exclusions uh and two schools that are accounting for nearly a quarter of uh of those exclusions. The report then moves uh on page eighty into uh the underlying reasons for um uh permanent exclusions being issued. And as you'll see from the tables, the three tables on there, uh we can see that persistent disruptive behaviour has remained the highest reason for the last two academic years. But you'll also note that whilst the uh second and third reason have stayed pretty similar percentages, uh persistent disruptive behaviour is seeing a further uh increase from the previous academic year. The report then moves into the uh data around suspensions. Um and the tables at the bottom of page eighty set out the numbers that we've been seeing in Lincolnshire. And you'll see that steep increase of uh we were seeing about five thousand uh suspensions uh pre-COVID, pre-pre pandemic. Uh that has risen steeply uh in twenty-two, twenty-three to nearly thirteen thousand, with a further subsequent uh significant increase to over sixteen thousand uh being issued in the last academic year. Uh similar to the situation with permanent exclusions, we're not seeing all of our secondary schools issuing high uh numbers of of suspensions. And uh the report sets out at the beginning of page one eighty-one and the the what that looks like. Uh and what we're seeing is is a trend where uh secondary schools issuing low permanent exclusions are also tending to issue low suspensions and vice versa. The report then moves into uh the reasons underpinning suspensions being issued. And again, we're seeing persistent disruptive behaviour as the highest reason. And again, similar to uh the the numbers around uh the issuing of uh permanent exclusions, uh we're seeing that whilst the second and third reasons are staying quite quite similar, uh persistent disruptive behaviour has seen a a further increase. Um the report then moves into at the bottom of page eighty-one into the impact on the high-needs budget. I'm not going to to dwell on that. We've already heard um from our popper well this afternoon about that that high and sustained uh pressure on the high-needs block. And that just further reiterates here that AP forms part of that and the spend on AP is part of the high-needs block and it's set out there. The report then moves into the support. Um and uh as we're aware, Lincolnshire's ladder of behavioural intervention is is that key area of intervention in Lincolnshire. And the report sets out um where intervention places have been used, uh drawing attention to uh secondary schools uh being unable to access those from the end of autumn term twenty-two uh twenty-two um as a result of the unprecedented pressure on our our uh need to to meet the demand of permanent exclusions. Um however, they have been uh continuing and continue to be available for our primary schools. And the table on page eighty-two sets out um those uh the data around that. Really great to see that uh the positive impact of intervention places uh and the high percentage of pupils that after accessing an intervention placement had not been permanently excluded a year after the uh intervention. The report then goes into uh highlighting that the the gap uh in relation to those that not only haven't been permanently excluded, but equally haven't moved to to requiring specialist provision has lessened uh with the data around that uh on uh page eighty-three. Um as with all um key interventions and processes, it's it's absolutely vital. We ensure they remain up to date and relevant. And so a review of the ladder is is currently taking place with a working group um to co-produce um developments around the ladder, particularly around that that robust early intervention, supporting schools to to implement that and uh and producing a toolkit as as just some of the the elements within that. The report then moves into uh two sort of key elements that that support around uh this area of work. Uh firstly, detailing pupil reintegration team, uh the support they provide and uh some uh changes and some uh developments around their their approach here. Head teacher inclusion panels, how they've been further developed. And then I think you you've heard a little bit about this already this afternoon, but the expansion of the team uh this academic year to provide dedicated support in relation to transitions um to to provide a a more robust and meaningful transition for those pupils returning to mainstream, uh either following a period of time in AP, uh alternative provision, or for those uh returning from special school as part of our transition protocol. Um the report then goes into that other aspect around BOSS, the Behaviour Outreach Support Service and that element within the ladder of intervention and the support they're they're providing. Um and the element around that being expanded uh with uh elements within their their portfolio, being able to offer wider support detailed at the top of page twenty eighty-five. Um the report then details uh another key development that um the local authority uh has put into place, uh absolutely taking on the board uh on board the uh feedback from uh our our school uh leaders and around that that changed landscape. Uh and the local authority has commissioned a behaviour support review from Positive Regard to work collaboratively with each of our secondary schools um to look at those uh necessary and crucial developments within settings to to meet the behavioural needs. I think it's also worth here, as as it says in the report, revisiting that element around not all of our schools are issuing high uh levels of exclusions. And uh the positive regard work through the uh reviews will enable us to also celebrate and identify that really good practice that is also taking place in Lincolnshire and we mustn't lose sight of um and enabling that good practice to be shared through a report at the end of the the behaviour support review work at the end of this academic year, which will enable us to uh to look at those developments a little bit further and that can then inform us going forward. Um bottom of page eighty-five of the report further sets out um other wider support that's available for Lincolnshire very briefly. But as uh you'll be fully aware, the the there's a vast array of support uh systems, strategies and provisions and agencies available to uh support schools. Uh the final element on the bottom of page eighty-five is uh in relation to uh capital investment that the local authority uh has put into place this last academic year with uh an expansion to uh Springwell-Lincoln into the Mile Cross Building. Uh this has increased uh the AP um uh kind of portfolio uh through this academic year of fifty-four places to meet the the current demand that's in place uh for those uh children that have been excluded. And we've already touched upon this this afternoon, but it's also around where we're looking at the um or we're taking forward that development of mainstream send hubs. There's also an element of that of developing AP hubs within our mainstream schools as well. So in conclusion, Lincolnshire's can see, Lincolnshire continues to be absolutely committed to improving outcomes for children, young people. The AP review, the Alternative Provision Review, continues to progress to consider how this provision and support needs to develop going forward. And as part of key partnership working alongside this, and equally as important, um are the inclusion developments and adjustments uh taking place and and being developed within our schools to meet the needs of the current landscape, the developing landscape and the needs of uh Lincolnshire children and young people. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Kate. Very much appreciated. Uh schools forum members, are there any questions or comments? Alan, please come in.
Thank you, Kate. Uh and thank you, Kate. I can talk from uh personal governance experience that uh that what you're providing is having an impact. Um so but however, on the um top of the paper, you mention, you give a breakdown of the number of secondary schools and that two of them are only for a quarter, whatever. I wonder if you've got any feel for, I know it's a different volume, uh but what what sort of breakdown was for the primary schools?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 element of the report has tended to focus on the secondary because our primaries are far smaller numbers um and tend to be um spread far more evenly with only one or two ex- exclusions, absolute maximum in our primary schools. So um it might be something that if if Forum would like me to drill into that in in next year's report or or equally I can provide some data, but it it it's so further spread, we haven't got primary schools, we haven't got the spread of numbers and and the difference of numbers across our primary um schools.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you. I was uh I was uh I'm asking, obviously I'm being selfish uh in front of the particular two schools that I'm involved in. So I was just wondering uh what whether or not there were any, but if it's, I I guess, just because it's the low numbers, then it is just a a spread across. Fine, no. Uh and I can support the, you definitely, your tables about the persistent disruptive that that in the schools that I'm involved, that definitely is on the increase. It's a challenge for all the staff involved, without a doubt.
Absolutely.
But anyway, thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Alan. We'll come to Michelle next and then Tristan.
Uh many thanks there, Josh. Uh Kate, can I start by saying thank you for the presentation that you've not just done today, but also that you did uh at the secondary heads uh briefing most recently. Uh regrettably, though, I think your presentation was quite condensed because the agenda uh got away with us time-wise. And I wonder, therefore, with Martin present, if we could uh put a bit of pressure on him for you to maybe deliver at one of the future heads briefings and uh and give that fuller report that perhaps we we didn't give time to considering uh given the importance of it um there. And and thank you also uh for the letters that you send out to the schools that that are trying their hardest uh to reduce suspensions uh and permanent exclusions, because that really does uh make a difference. We're we're all too often told when we're not doing something as good as we could uh do, but it's nice to receive a letter uh to say when things are going well. Uh I wanted to just also say, uh as one of my schools has been through the Positive Regard um review, and it was one of the most positive experiences that I've had uh in a number of years. I've been a teacher for thirty-seven years. Um was actually involved in London as part of the original DFE pilot for when managed moves and behaviour ladders were being considered. Uh and I found myself sitting at a table with two uh much younger school leaders now than I am, uh but hearing exactly that same sort of positive approach to positive behaviour management and working collectively in schools uh for that consistency. Uh and it was really, really quite an enjoyable experience to be part of that. So thank you for organising and and funding that. Uh I think, though, what I would say is a head who has seen an increase, almost a doubling uh just in the last academic year of the number of uh suspensions that I have issued. Um I'm very particular in terms of ensuring that they are consistent with my normal expectations of behaviour. I won't go rogue and just issue suspensions willy-nilly. I am trying really, really hard, but and I know that you know this, but it is becoming harder in secondary schools with a growing but significantly small by comparison to other schools and um the cohort size I have not to use these suspensions. When I'm on to that second, third, fourth warning, um it it's really only ever issued as a last resort, but the behaviours that we are seeing now, you know this, are becoming so significant that that often there is no alternative. Uh and I think what frustrates me at those points is at times still, despite all the fantastic work you're doing, um not always that joined-up picture that I would like to see in provision and support, particularly when we're dealing with children that are maybe uh from out of county. Uh so my schools in South Holland pick up large numbers from Cambridgeshire, Peterboroughshire. Uh and I know that that's where it's tricky, where we're working cross uh local authorities, but that's where we need the joined-up frustrations, uh sorry, joined-up thinking, because that's where there is the frustration in getting the provision in a timely manner to prevent suspensions. Uh so I'm sure I'm preaching to the converted. I'm just giving you a little bit of extra evidence that you could use anecdotally when faced with those challenges. We need still a joined-up picture, particularly where there's cross-county provision in place.
Yeah, so thank you for all that that feedback, Michelle, and really appreciate that. And um, you know, notice about leadership, I'll I'll catch up with Martin and and sort of wider colleagues in the local authority around how we can potentially uh link up with the leadership briefings again. Um also, thank you for the feedback about the letters. Um and and just for those uh in in this afternoon's forum that that aren't where letters went out to all of our schools, particularly to praise those schools that aren't resorting to high numbers of exclusions um and offers of support for those that are resorting to see how we can further uh work with them. But you know, I think it goes back to the element within the report that it's absolutely important that that we're praising schools for the hard work. We absolutely get that it's it's a difficult landscape. And this is about that partnership working. It's not about pointing fingers or or blame. Um great feedback about the review. I'd just like to highlight again for the forum, we've had really positive feedback across the number of schools that have already participated in in the review, um which is absolutely great news and we're continuing to roll those out through this year. Um thanks for the feedback about the cross-border situation. Bit more challenging, um but certainly um something I'll pick up on and and see if we can do anything to support around that going forward. But that's really helpful feedback. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you so much. Tristan, please come in.
Thanks very much. Um I won't repeat a lot of what what's been said there. Just want to thank you for the report. There was a lot of detailed information in there and it it's certainly lots of evidence there for for things working in a in a difficult situation. So thank you, Kate, and thank you for the work of the team as well. Um I I just wanted to add something to that work about joined-up approach. Um we are, we had one of your letters. We are low in terms of exclusion, suspensions, et cetera. But where we've got other schools who who are higher excluded as uh suspensions, it does create amongst per- parents parental expectations about what we will do. So actually, sometimes the toughest job is when you keep the the children in school and you don't exclude and you don't suspend. And I wanted to wave a flag to that and say managing those expectations of parents, you know, we 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 we're we're dealing with a a couple of uh parental complaints. And actually, it's about people getting very vociferous about when they want to see children excluded from school. Um and uh, you know, we can talk very much about inclusive practice, but actually, there 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 is that parental perception to to change as well and manage within that. And it becomes more difficult if um if that you've got that disparity with that joined-up approach. So uh maybe well, reaching out to you or your team uh just to give trustees confidence that their behaviour management policy and the way that we've managed things is actually in line with a robust approach, but actually, it 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 manages the behaviour and and of all children there. So I just wanted to add that to the to the um the feedback you've had already, but thank you again, Kate.
Yeah, no, that's really great. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Tristan. Simon?
Thank you very much, Josh. Um firstly, Kate, I'd like to
Thank you very much, Josh. Firstly, Kate, I'd like to congratulate you on how you behaved and held yourself in the heads briefing. Very, very impressed. Thank you. I'm going to kind of echo Michelle and Tristan's comments there. We deal with Rutland, Leicester Shire, Nottinghamshire, Peterborough. And I just, you know, add in to what Michelle said there. And very much as well echo what Tristan said, you know, it's the rights of everybody and students who are not being suspended also have rights to education. I think that's important. But I really did pick up in your report, quite interesting statistically, that 5% of all students being suspended, which seems incredible within Lincolnshire, and the average student being suspended therefore has committed three suspensions. And I think that's clearly a piece of work that you're working on, but just an incredible, and just kind of highlighting that. And thank you for your incredible work that you continue to do with those students. So thank you.
Oh, I mean, thanks, Simon. I'll pass on the thanks from everybody to the teams because I'd like to, you know, recognise the hard work they do on the ground. I do the easy stuff like come and present at Schools Forum. So, you know, I will pass on that. But yeah, you know, that element around pupils that got high numbers of exclusions, high numbers of suspension, sorry, that's something that we do identify in the local authority and we then target going with those schools and supporting to try and prevent that escalating any further. But no, appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. And Kate, thank you so much. And conscious of time, unless there are, oh no, Andrew, as quickly as you're able, Andrew, the chairing hasn't been a very effective timekeeping wise today.
Sorry to have to butt in. I was just going to say, thank you very much, Kate. From a governance perspective, I do sit on quite a few exclusion panels when they've occurred. Just a couple of things. I very much appreciate your report. I think a lot of this must obviously come from the pandemic, but I do pick up very much what Michelle was saying, the out of county issues that we're picking, because again, my school's in the south of the county and we're getting the same problems in South Holland. Something we have picked up just for transition, I don't know whether you're picking up any children that are going in and out of home education, but I'd suggest perhaps that might be something to look at because we have had some come back into the school and then they've been excluded because they've not been able to settle. And parents have removed them to say they'll do home education and then they've not been able to go back into mainstream. The things that we are experiencing is that some parents are wanting their children to go into alternative provision, which is so difficult because the school is trying to keep them mainstream, but they're telling their child do as much as they can to get them out of mainstream. That's unusual, but I can't do much more. And also, I think Michelle did mention this, but the Integrated Care Board has got to be essential to this, but it's got to be regional because trying to get them into mental health services and paediatric services when they're needed, rather than having to wait six months, nine months, a year. A year of their education has been lost very often. So anything you can do to enhance that will be great. Thank you very much, Kate and Chair.
That's fine. Can I just respond quickly to those, Josh? Is that okay? Yeah, thank you for that feedback and certainly that element around EHE. We have seen a sharp increase in EHE since the pandemics as well. So that landscape is all part of that bigger one landscape, isn't it? Regarding health, we continue to work closely with health, work closely with health colleagues around that mental health side of things. And I know there's a mental health review taking place and transformation. So there are wide pieces I won't go into now, but you know, certainly I'll make sure that, continue to link into those and appreciate the feedback from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew and Kate. Very much appreciated. And we were asked today to consider the report, provide comment and questions in relation to it. And I propose that we've done so. Does anyone dissent? No? Okay, great. So we're nearly there, colleagues. Item number 11, Lizzie, Academies and Trust Update. Over to you.
Thank you. So this report is presented at each of the four meetings and provides an update on the latest position regarding the number of academies and pupils in academies across Lincolnshire. At the time of writing the report, Help and In Primary had converted to an academy and now three further schools have converted on the 1st of November as detailed in the report. A key policy change to highlight to members is that schools who have received two requires improvement Ofsted ratings are no longer required to convert to an academy. This impacts a number of schools in Lincolnshire as detailed on page 88. The tables on page 88 and 89 provide a breakdown per sector between maintained schools and academies now and the projected position in six months' time. At the moment, 73.7% of pupils attend an academy. However, over half of primary schools are still maintained schools. Page 89 provides a list of the academy trusts that have the largest number of academies and free schools in Lincolnshire. And page 90 details the multi-academy trusts in Lincolnshire. The forum is asked to note the content of the report.
Thank you so much, Lizzie. Any questions, colleagues, in relation to this report? Okay. And our recommendation here is to note the contents and I propose we've done so. Any dissent? No? Okay. Thank you, Lizzie. Much appreciated for all the reports you've delivered today. Finally then, everyone, work programme. Everyone's invited to ask questions or submit requests to be added to the work programme, the documentation in our packs. Any questions or suggestions for future meetings? And I presume Jess and other authority colleagues, we would be very welcoming of suggestions in between meetings if that is appropriate. Yeah, thank you. So I'm going to move us on then to a proposal that we have considered this. There are no additional items suggested, but please do come back to us if anything comes up in between meetings. In which case, that now concludes the business of today's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. You'll be delighted to hear that Gavin will be back next time to keep us to order, better than I perhaps have done today. Thanks for your patience and so much for your contributions. Please feel free to leave using the big red phone icon in the taskbar. Cheers, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jess.